You are live.
Good afternoon. Welcome to this second of three ACPE virtual town hall meetings regarding the consolidation with AAPC. I'm Amy Green, the board chair through 2019, and I will let my colleagues on the executive committee introduce themselves to you and then we'll get moving. The last time we did this, we had a few little comments to make at the beginning, and we mostly are going to just wait for the questions that are coming from the people viewing right now. We're not going to spend a lot of time going over things that have already been printed in the ACPE news or elsewhere, unless that's part of the question that someone has. We're not going to get past it. But there has been a lot of information available, and so we're going to not just rehash all that until we find out what specifically people want to know. So take it away, Linda or Melissa.
So hi, my name's Melissa Walker-Luckett. I'm chair-elect of the board through the end of this year and will become chair 2020. I am a certified educator in Dallas, Texas, and I look forward to meeting with you.
And I'm Melinda Wilkerson. I'm the current secretary treasurer for the board and am a certified educator at Parkland Health and Hospital System in Dallas and glad to be on this call with you all.
Great. Another point of housekeeping is that all the town hall meetings are being recorded and will be posted to the YouTube channel. So if you have to leave early, you miss part of this, you want to hear something over, or you want to share it with others, it will be posted. Everyone is encouraged to submit their questions with the Q&amp;A icon at the bottom of the screen. We had looked for ways to make this a little more conversational, but I think given the number of people, it just wasn't doable. That was our decision. So John Roche is in the national office there, helping us collate and moderate the questions. Don't worry if we don't get to your question because we will follow up with you after the meeting. And you can also send your questions directly to the webmaster@acpe.edu. So with that, I think that we will take a look at what's out there. What do people want to know today? Are we starting with written questions, John, or are we taking the live ones?
We don't have any live questions just as of yet.
Okay. All right. So a couple of reminders. If we want to just go through things that we're talking about, it's a referendum that we're talking about. So if the members of the AAPC do vote to dissolve their association, and that's what they have to decide, that's coming up, then the next thing for us to do, that's what we're leading up to, is our vote whether to take them on. The ballots will be sent out by simply voting, and they'll open on Wednesday, January 30th at 7:00 a.m. And you'll have until February the 9th at 7:00 a.m. to vote. AAPC membership will be voting at the same time. That's a requirement of Missouri law, which is where they're incorporated, and they'll be voting to dissolve at the same time that we do our vote. That's just a little bit more background on the process. I'm not sure what people want to know. So do we see?
We have two questions.
Great.
And we got a couple coming in. All right. This is from Frank Wogan. Will the ACPE add office staff to handle the additional administrative work?
Great question, yes. The AAPC is actually bringing with them, I think, about $1 million still in funding that they're able to afford their own person to join the staff. I think we're talking about part-time at first to see how that goes, but definitely they will be covering their own expenses for that. Do you want to say more about that, John or Linda? I don't know if...
No, I think at this point, what we've talked about is adding an additional staff person to manage the membership that they're bringing and the kinds of educational things and communities of practice and all of that that they want to begin. But you're right, they have the funding to cover that cost, so it's not going to increase ACPE's costs.
The next question we have is from Jack Garashi. What ultimately would be the best scenario hoped for if the two groups do come together? In other words, what would be the benefit?
Great question. Either of you want to take a stab at that first? Or I know what I think a lot of the benefits are and the vision, but...
Go ahead, Amy, you start.
I think for me, because of the world we're in and because this is another historic group that's been engaged in quality spiritual care, albeit of a different... They're cousins of ours, and we have different practices. But we have, I think, very similar goals. And I think, given the way the world is changing, in terms of people looking for spirituality in their workplace, in their regular life, in ways that they're not exactly with the same volume looking for that exclusively in congregational life, I feel excited about the ways we can cross-pollinate. One of the things that they're planning is a spiritually-integrated psychotherapy track for therapists of all kinds who have to be licensed in their own states and in their own ways anyway. So we're not getting into that business, and they no longer even certify themselves. So they've been out of that business for a while, and actually, that's part of why they've been kind of going down the tubes. It's not as... People aren't as reliant on membership in that organization to practice. They don't have to belong to that in order to have a license to practice. So that's part of their impending demise, if you will. What we're hoping to help them keep alive is the creativity of their practice and the spiritual roots of their practice. So once they've perfected this curriculum, which I really think they can, and the training that will go with it, for which they will charge, and that will be how they pay for themselves in a way, I'm excited about seeing how they adapt that for other groups of people that might be interested in a kind of education that isn't full-blown CPE, and it's not the kind that we do, but brings a spiritually-integrated approach to whatever their caregiving practice is as a way of possibly bringing in some income. I mean, I think that's something we have to think realistically about as we go down the road. So that's just one among many. I think the communities of practice can be really rich with people from both sides of things, chaplains and counselors mixing together in the same COPs with similar theoretical frameworks, similar models of care that they want to cross-pollinate with. I just think it's time in history to band together. I don't think the general public knows that much, can really tell the difference. And so if we're more able to work together toward common goals and advocacy and that sort of thing, but also be clearer about what are the different branches within our family tree and how are those helpful to different institutions. I'd also like to see CPE centers growing in counseling centers. There used to be a lot more that had both, and we've seen a real decline of those. And I think it would be cool to go back to the days when we had more of those. So that's just a little bit of my side of things. Love to hear from you guys.
One of the things I hope for, so as a hospital chaplain, it would be really great to have a list of colleagues that I could refer families to in their grief process, in their figuring out how they're going to go on with whatever has happened for them during their stay in the hospital. And these folks who are our cousins, as you say, Amy, are great assets for us. But I don't know all of them. I mean, I live in Dallas, and there are lots of folks who are here, and I've made referrals at times, but I don't know people personally. And to know people as a colleague in a more environment that's conducive to truly knowing one another, that will be an asset for me and for our hospital, and I think for other hospitals in the city and potentially across the country.
I don't really have anything else to add. I agree with both of you. I think there are a lot of benefits to us. And primarily, it strengthens our presence as we go out to seek funding, as we go out to lobby, all of that. I think it just makes us a bigger, wider, more prominent organization.
Okay. So Wayne Banking would just like us to clarify. AAPC as the entity is not merging with ACPE. AAPC will dissolve if it's voted that way.
Correct.
So they'll dissolve, and then ACPE will invite their former members to join us in these new membership categories.
Correct.
So just a clarification.
Very good. And AAPC, as we know it, will disappear. What might occur is that for the near future, some people are using as a subtitle formerly AAPC. We don't know yet. I mean, there may be some ways where people need to bridge over to communicate who they were, but their name will be ACPE. That's correct.
Right. And so I think a good follow-up question from that is Janet Lutz asks, are we rescuing them?
Yes and no. I mean, I think it would not be honest to say that without us, they will dissolve completely. They will go out of business completely without us. What would have happened would have been a couple of regions that had a higher level of engagement and membership would probably continue to function for a good bit longer in terms of having their own conferences. But even that would eventually run out because the infrastructure that it takes to keep an organization robust and growing, they just didn't have. We had already started. Teri Isagari and others in the office had already contracted out some time in the past to help them plan some of these events. And so there was already sort of a trial balloon effect of having to see, what would it be like if we had access to a little more infrastructure? And so, yes, we are rescuing them. But that being said, it's not just a bailout, just for the sake of bailout. We know that they'll be standing on their own two feet. They'll be bringing in their own income. We are not threatening our income to do this. We're watching it very carefully. We're not going to wait till the very last minute and say, whoops, they ran out of money. I mean, people smarter than me, like Linda, are going to be watching very closely to see that their membership, the people that are joining that want to keep this going will be contributing enough to make it happen. And it's not going to be just kind of one big happy family where we siphon off all our own resources. But we're watching it pretty carefully.
If they vote to dissolve, our referendum question is, should the board... I'm not getting the language exactly right, but should the board invite their members to join ACPE? And what that means is, it's not an... If they do and if we do, it's not an automatic transfer of membership. Persons who are interested in joining ACPE will do that in and of themselves.
One person at a time.
Yep. And their membership isn't like ours. Ours is once a year, and everybody gets the same bill or gets their bill, and everybody pays at the same time. And so the membership is all across the year. It's been staggered with the way they've done their business. And so, once that has...
It's a full-year cycle.
Right. Then it'll all come back to being... If they're members, if they join, they'll be members on the same cycle that all of the rest of ACPE members are members. I think the other thing I would say is that... I thought what Amy said was really right on target. We're not bailing them out just for the sake of bailing them out. We're inviting them because we think they have something to offer to our organization and that they will strengthen us. I think if we... We've had both meetings via phone and then also one in person to really talk these things out. And I really believe that if we felt like we were simply bailing them out and that they weren't going to add anything to who we are, to our identity, and to the things that we offer, that we wouldn't actually be at this place of making this invitation or having this referendum. But I think our conversations with them and our understanding of who they are, what they're about, really the really wonderful creative work they have been doing, even as their infrastructure for their organization has sort of been, I guess, for all intents and purposes, are falling apart, they've continued to do really wonderful, creative, educational efforts. And that really is what they're about, which I think connects so well with us. They really are about creating education and communities of practice for their members. So it seemed like a really good fit. And we still in ACPE and our standards and outcomes talk about training our students intensively and extensively in pastoral counseling. And I personally think that that's what they have... They really have a lot of richness to offer to us so that we can really do what we say that we're called to do with our students.
Do we have two similar questions? So I'm going to group them together. Connie Bonner and Maurice Applebaum are basically asking about the negatives. What are some of the concerns? What would be a catastrophe for us or a worst-case scenario look like? And then if they did arise, how would we tackle them?
I think that, again, like I said earlier, the worst thing I can think of is that they just can't make it financially, that some of the ideas they have and the membership fees that they're able and willing to pay and the number of people that are willing to join just doesn't add up to enough to do what they would hope to do. And we have to say, okay, thanks, we tried and it was worth it. I don't think relations could be any worse than they have been in the past when everyone was so siloed and so separated and so, you know, we're this and you're that. And I think those days are largely over, I hope. And so I don't feel like... I don't really have a lot of fears because I feel like we're taking this very slowly and very responsibly. And the worst thing that can happen is that they still don't quite have the following, the commitment from the therapists who have made up their membership who want to do this to keep it going. And if they don't, we don't. We let it go. And I think we would do that well before we reached the edge of the cliff. I know we would because none of us is interested in having to bail this out personally.
So from my standpoint, I'm not sure that I can see anything catastrophic happening. I mean, I guess, from their standpoint, if this did not work, if they voted to dissolve and then to join with... And they accept the invitation to join with us, and a year or two years later from now, they decide, wow, this just is not meeting our needs, the needs of our members who came over, it's not working, and we couldn't find a solution to that, and they decided to go a different direction. I mean, I guess that would be the worst thing that could happen. I guess in my mind, that doesn't feel catastrophic.
Right.
It just feels like, well, that is a possibility. I think, for me, I don't have any deep concerns about this. I do think that it's always... Change is difficult. We are embarking on a kind of a new stream within ACPE, and there are going to be just the inevitable bumps on the road. Some of those are just simply going to be logistical things that don't work the way we thought they were going to work. But I also think there is going to be a shift in identity primarily for those folks coming in. I mean, they are going to have to lay down AAPC and pick up ACPE. And I think we're going to be called on to be brothers and sisters and help them in that transition. But that feels to me still like work that we're well able to do. So I don't have any... It's hard for me to come up with a lot of downsides to this, honestly.
Okay. Brenda Lopez asks, is there a place to view the minutes of the town hall meetings? So just a reminder, these are being recorded and will be posted to our YouTube. Next, we have a question from Kathy Hacey. She's curious about some of the numbers. How many anticipated AAPC folks would join? And how does that align with what they'd be paying per person? The different membership categories, the 100 to the 300? And how would that... Or do we think that will cover the cost of the salary and benefits of a new team member?
Can I take that on?
Please.
So I think, first of all, we don't have any idea how many of their members are going to join AAPC. We anticipated, as we worked through the numbers and came up with a possible budget, that they would not all join us, so that we built that cushion into the budgeting process. I can't remember the exact number that we were anticipating might come over, but we really aren't going to know that until a full year has gone by in their full-year cycle because they're billing their folks, as Melissa said, throughout the year. But the great thing is that they're coming to us with some reserve funds. They're not funding everything immediately out of the income that they're bringing in. They're bringing to the table about $1 million that they have. That's after they've paid all their bills. So there's a cushion there that can be used in this transition period. And after that first year, when we actually see how many of their folks have moved over, then we will be looking at the numbers, looking at what we're charging, looking at what's reasonable to charge them, especially given that they pay pretty stiff licensure fees already in their states that certified educators don't have to pay. So I think we will be going back to the table and looking again at the budget once we have a better, firmer grasp on those numbers. But I think we're in good shape right now and that we've anticipated that we're going to need some cushion.
And I think we're probably looking at the under 500. That's sort of the guess that their board has because it's 1,100 right now. But as we've said repeatedly, the whole group doesn't come. It's one person at a time decides to join. And when we see after a year or so how many people say yes and join, we'll have a lot clearer idea. But I think most of their leaders think that it probably will be in the 300-400 range because a lot of people aging out, retiring, you know, thinking, I really don't know what I'm going to get out of this, so I'm probably not going to pay another fee. A lot of people are going to be much more wait-and-see. So I really don't expect... I'm kind of anticipating the 300-400 range, but we just don't know. We don't have any way to predict it.
I do want to say that I think I've heard the AAPC folks talk about the fact that they're also hopeful that once this... If this consolidation goes through and once it kind of gets its feet on the ground, legs, that a new organization or the ACPE will attract some new folks, especially some younger people who don't need this organization for certification or for licensure, but they do need continuing education and they need... What they're finding in AAPC is that people who are younger who are joining them are joining them because they need the collegiality of working and being with colleagues who think that spirituality is an important part of their practice. So they're sort of hoping that this will breathe some new life into what they're about. And I'm hoping that, too.
Me, too.
Just a reminder, please try to keep your questions in the Q&amp;A and not the chat. It'll make it just a little bit easier to collate the questions coming in for me. Thank you. Kitty Garland would like to know, what will they be using as their titles or letters after their name? What are the membership categories? What are their titles and what would their credentials be?
I think a lot of that still remains to be seen. One of the things we talked about when we were all together in December was that they will be using ACPE as an acronym, especially given that we're using our new name as the standard for spiritual care and education. So a lot of them, they may be called ACPE. Some of them may choose to be called ACBE, psychotherapists. Or we don't know yet. We're working that out still. But it's not going to be the same. We don't need to worry that they're going to be running around pretending to be ACPE certified educators. We have a lot of categories. We already have more categories than we used to, and it'll be something different. But I don't think it's completely resolved yet. It won't be AAPC, we know that. I mean, the bottom line is we're all wearing the same stamp on our foreheads. And however they phrase it, yeah.
I think first and foremost, they're going to be either whatever it is that they are licensed for.
Right.
Whether it's LPC, LMFT, whatever. That's going to be their first designation. And we, as the association that they are a part of, if that all happens, would be what comes after that. They are always going to be a licensed counselor of some sort first.
Right. And if they even bother to use anything that has to do with ACPE, because they might not even bother.
Right.
Kitty would also like to know. She's heard talk that ACPE certified educators who are not attached to a center would be able to get liability insurance after we consolidate it. Where does that stand?
That's a good question. I remember that briefly coming up. Do you remember, Linda?
Well, I don't know. So all I can say is I think that we're in the place of exploring whether or not ACPE could offer liability insurance because that is one of the key needs of these folks that are practicing independently. And my assumption is that if we are able to offer that kind of liability insurance, we could offer that to independent practitioners of ACPE as well as folks who are doing counseling. But we're not too far down that path yet. I mean, that's just an option that we want to explore, that we hope that we could provide, hoping that we could do it at a cost that's less than what people are paying now. And so, no decisions have been made. We're just exploring that option and wanting to see if we could do that.
All right. Our next question comes from Matthew Rhodes. He says, I understand that former AAPC members who will soon be ACPE members will have commissions and committees. As I understand it, in ACPE, we only have commissions for certifying and accrediting, neither of which AAPC currently does. Thus, what would the function of a new commission be for former AAPC members as opposed to being a committee? Perhaps there is a function needed for their purposes that I am unaware of.
I think you're probably right. We're probably mostly talking about committees. I actually don't remember a specific commission that we were talking about being needed. They're not going to certify anything. They are possibly going to offer certificates. That's a very important part of what they want to do because that's where they think the market is driving some of their curriculum building. But it's not certification. So there won't be any... It may be that there are no commissions at all. Maybe we were just using that word too loosely. That's how I recall the conversation. Maybe someone else?
No, I agree. Yeah, clearly, they're not certifying. We're not going to be accrediting a center for them or anything like that at this point, anything apart from what we would normally do with ACPE accreditation. So I honestly think we're probably just looking at committees that would primarily ensure that the kinds of education that they want, feel like they need to offer to folks who are doing spiritual counseling, that we're attending to that and making that possible.
Yvonne Valeris would like to know, will they, I'm assuming former AAPC members, be certified educators?
No. Not unless they go through the certified educator process, just like we can't become licensed counselors just because we are colleagues in our association.
Right.
So a follow-up question to that would be, will there be a streamlined path from educator to counselor?
Not a shortcut. So a streamlined meaning... I'm not sure where that word ever came from. I think it's the wrong word. I mean, are there opportunities for people to branch out into those same professions? Yes, the same as there always have been, probably with a little more... You know, like Melissa was saying, we'll know them more personally. We'll have more colleagues to talk to about it. We'll have more support to do it. Anybody that wants to cross over and increase their skill set. But there's no short cutting of anything. Nobody's going to trade out one training for another, not in any way, form.
To be a counselor, you have to be licensed. You have to have certain educational process. Now, maybe in some of our education, there is that sort of... What is that, the Venn diagram, that middle ground where you've already got some of that stuff and you can add to it and then become a counselor as well as a certified educator? But again, that's a separate process that is state-governed.
Yeah, that's a separate process even from AAPC. AAPC is not licensing people. It's not certifying people. It's not accrediting centers. It's not accrediting centers. They are primarily offering educational opportunities and collegial opportunities to folks who are interested in spiritually oriented counseling. But all of the rest of that stuff comes through state licensure requirements and they're different by state.
Yeah. And I think what we heard strongly from our colleagues when we met face to face was the, the sense of identity that they don't want to give up their, you know, they had the same issue that we had with pastoral being this kind of archaic word as part of their name, but still wanting to appeal to not only their religious and spiritual roots and theological, the depth of their theological training, but also communicate to the world that they still are taking seriously this, the spirituality of the people they're providing care for as well as their own. And so it gives them a way to use that, gives them a language for that. It's a little more comfortable because they were at the crossroads too with what to even name, what to even call themselves, assuming they were going to survive into the future. And so for them, this is, this is a, an identity piece as well.
Again, we have two similar questions from Yvonne Valeris and Kathy Hasty. Will this have any impact on our recognition by the DOE as an accreditor?
Nope. No, it will not. We, again, all our CPE dealings, all our accreditation stays exactly the way it's been. All of our massive overhaul and improvements of the last five years will remain, you know, remain intact and I think continue to improve. So absolutely not, there's no, there's no correlation, no connection to the two.
Bob Anderson would like to, he asked, Bob Anderson asks, are you aware of ACP centers that include AAPC practitioners in their services?
Um, yeah, I'm not the best person to ask that. I think Trace has a really good finger on that. I think there's a couple even in Atlanta near the offices. They're, they exist, but they're just not as many as they used to be. I think some of our, some of our senior members of the organization who are members of both could really weigh in on that. We have several folks out there, Peter Keys, Franklin Duncan, people like that who would be able to tell you what, kind of what used to be and maybe where we are now. I know it's a lot, a lot fewer. But again, as I said earlier, I'd love to see that grow again because I thought that was a really cool cross pollination at the time and an important service to the community. Because a lot of times people don't know exactly what they need.
I think there are, there are AAP, ACPE centers that have the great advantage of having AAPC folks like Russell Seiler Jones and others who have been participating in the curriculum offerings. And so for the ACPE students, so, and programs. So I'm hopeful that this will give us more connections and inroads to do that together.
Wake Forest is a great example. Wake, Wake Forest Spiritual Care Department is a really good people there.
Peter Schrening asks, does the potential merger indicate an identity change or perhaps an opportunity for an identity change for ACPE? From an association of individuals who educate to an association of individuals who educate and provide spiritual care?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, I mean, I don't mean to hog it. You want to, you want to?
No, go for it.
I, I think it's part of the vision that we've been working toward for a long time and part of our conversations with these other strategic partners, the, the larger chaplaincy organizations that are more service oriented and where we tend to be focused on education. I think a lot of our own constituency still doesn't know that we don't certify chaplains, that only the, the, you know, associations of chaplains certify chaplains. And so I think you're right. It's part of a, I think most of us feel kind of excited about that, that yeah, we do want to broaden, sort of like the AMA, you know, the American Medical Association includes all kinds of medical practice. It's not just the American Associate, Medical Association that only has pediatric doctors. So we're sort of thinking in broader terms of being an association for, for spiritual care and education that, that has a lot more reach and a lot more complexity to it. And this fills in a little bit like a trial balloon. Like this, this little first foray into this gives us an idea of what is it going to be like? And have we underestimated the problems that are going to be created? And have we been too naive and all that? This is a, this is a good sort of a, you know, clinical trial, if you will.
I wanted to say, I don't think that we've, we haven't gone into this particular consolidation with the idea of promoting a significant identity change for ACPE at this point. I honestly think that that's going to be something that comes out of all of us as a group and our own reflections and experiences over the next several years as we incorporate, if, if it comes about, as if we incorporate the members of AAPC. I think the interesting thing will be a conversation among ourselves about how do we see ourselves then? You know, when that happens and after we've lived with that for a little bit, what is that? How has that shaped us? Surely it will. I'm just not sure that we can, we can say to what extent. But I do want people to hear clearly that this wasn't, that this consolidation wasn't like some sort of master plan to change ACP's identity. I think if that happens, it's going to be a natural process that we will all be involved in experiencing and having conversations around.
Right. Yeah, I'm glad you said that Linda, because I, I agree completely. What I was trying to communicate, and I don't think I did it very well, was that the changes we've been going through as ACP over the last four to five years to me signify a, a, a real, I wouldn't even say a change, but a, but a big leap forward in our evolution from our 50-year history. And so this to me, these items that were, these things that we're talking about now feel to me like an outgrowth of that same renewal movement. It feels like a renewal movement to me. And, and these feel like pieces of that renewal movement. And, and so it's more of an outgrowth than, than a cause.
I would like to thank Wayne Banking for reminding me again, this is not a merger. So I will, if merger is in the question, I will do my best to replace it with the word consolidation. So a good follow-up to that is from Maurice Ababam. He says, if this consolidation goes well, what might a timeline for a consolidation with our strategic partners down the road look like?
Great question. That's the conversations we're having right now. We have a big summit planned for 2020, coming to Cleveland, Ohio, yay. I think we're all going to have a joint conference that year and that's already being planned. It's in the works. I don't know if anybody, I think it's just too soon to tell what, nobody's putting a, nobody's.
We don't have a timeline.
We're not doing a save the date, you know, for that. We're doing a save the date for the conference. But I think it's all just part of the conversation. Again, lots of really important and good spirited and very honest and open conversations going forward with everybody's, you know, financial eyes wide open, everybody's legal consultants on board. It's being done very, very carefully and slowly. It may feel fast, you know, out in the, out in the, the wider world, it might seem like it's going fast. But I, I really want to assure you, we're taking, we're taking our time to try to do this right. And obviously we can't do anything without, without the boat. So we're not, it's not us. We're just, we're just like trying to lay the groundwork and get the information out there. But there's no timeline, not that I'm aware of. And I think I would know, I hope I would know.
I, I do think that, I don't know this to be true Maurice, but I think that folks are probably in other organizations will be interested to see how this goes. And that may move a timeline up in their minds or, or move it back. I, I don't know. I, I don't think anybody that I know of has proposed any kind of timeline for any other organizations consolidating with ACPE at this point. I think this is just a, a chance to see how it might work with a, you know, kind of a, what I think of as a fairly small group becoming consolidated with ACPE.
All right. Our next question comes from Pat McCoy. He says, what will be the eligibility requirements for people to join ACPE as a psychotherapist member? Current ACP voting members have eligibility requirements that include ACP training. Will there be anything similar for current or future members from the AAPC side?
That's a good question. Anybody want to jump in there?
Well, I think at this point, at, with at least this initial round, they will be eligible to join if they are currently members of AAPC and they have met AAPC's requirements. But you ask a good question. I don't know that I've got the answer for a second or third wave of people who are going to be joining ACPE whose primary identity is as a spiritual counselor. We'll probably need to work our way through that.
Yeah. My assumption.
I appreciate if you're asking that.
Yeah, it's a very good question. I think the, like, like several have said that they have to be licensed as psychotherapists in their own right. I mean, we can't do that. So my assumption has been that they are people who, for whom ACP training was part of their formation as therapists. Now, that won't be exclusively true, but I would think that that would be largely true. Otherwise I would think, why would they want to do it? But I think that's part of what has to be worked out going forward.
I think Patrick, I think that is a great idea and I, I appreciate that. I, I know there are some pastoral counselors, some members of AAPC who had, who probably haven't ever had CPE. So I think that's a really good question for the, the executive committee of ACP to think about and discuss with each other and with others in ACP and with the executive committee of AAPC. So thank you for that question.
Yeah, it's a very good question. Because I, I agree. I mean, I'm, I think underneath that, and I may here, and I don't want to project this onto you, but I hear, you know, I wouldn't want people using our good name to imply that they had had, you know, ACP training when they really had, never had even a taste of it. But, you know, I don't know. I, I think that's just a great, great question, as I would expect. We'll look into it. We definitely welcome your thoughts on it Patrick because, yeah, I'd love to hear what you think.
Hey John, write that down.
Yeah, write that down.
I got, we got them all.
Sign him up, sign up Patrick.
Recording.
That's right. Okay, our next question comes from William Foster. What liabilities would we assume or new responsibilities would we carry on, carry on the one hand? And on the other hand, what new ministry potential might ACP centers and members gain? Such as new training opportunities to address the spiritual needs of interprofessional healthcare colleagues?
Well, hey Bill, I, I think I said something related to that in the very beginning of the hour, that with this new curriculum they're working on, that they do think once they've piloted it and run it for a while, they think they might be able to adapt it to other professionals, other professional groups who would like to be able to utilize their spirituality in a similar way, physicians, nurses. That's all down the road, big, big, kind of dreaming big things. I think that that's a great, you know, there's a, we don't know yet, but I think there's real potential. I, I still don't, I still can't really come up with a lot of liabilities. I'm just not, not doing it. I don't, I don't, I can't come up with them. We've, we've talked about it, yeah.
One, one of the advantages I think may be for us is this, the curriculum that they are developing, the spiritually integrated.
Psychotherapy.
Yes. Not that we would become psychotherapists, but that we could use that, use that training or use that understanding in our work with patients, families and with our students. And it wouldn't be that we would be certified in that, but it would be that we would be able to access that training. That's another really good advantage, I think. When we start having meetings together, I really hope that, that we have sort of a fertilization of creativity around our educational processes for, and offerings during national meetings. And then, and so I really hope that that's part of what happens.
Yeah, Bill, I mean, Bill, I know you're in a big system and, and I'm in a big hospital system. Most, a lot of us are, most of us are. And I'm really hopeful about something like a spiritually integrated caregiving. You know, that they, that it's, that it's a, another cousin of this spiritually integrated approach to psychotherapy because it's not a long, long program. It's not a 400, it's not 400 hours of CPE. So it's the kind of thing that people can get. And I know here at the clinic, you know, if I had something like that to offer to nurses or to.
Social workers.
Group of social workers, a group of physicians. I mean, you could fill up groups right and left, I think, in, in most hospitals. Who, people who are really hungering to know how to bring their spirituality to work. They've largely been told not to. Then they've been told, then they've been told that JCO requires it and they have to, but they don't know how. Medical students in the very recent past haven't gotten any help with it.
And even more distressing is when their clients or their patients, so that nurse at the bedside asks someone to pray with them. And, and there you go.
They don't know what to do.
So, social workers as well, who, part of the genesis of that within AAPC was that their clients were asking for help for their own spirituality. The clients were asking, can you help me with my spirituality around this as a part of my counseling? And they wanted to be responsible, considerate in thinking about how to do that and how to train people to do that. So in some ways, it's good for them to use who they are and it meets a need that they're being asked to fill. So, yeah, if we can use it in hospital with other disciplines, that'd be great.
Yeah. And I think.
Well, I was just going to say on the liability side, I'm not sure what kind of liability you were talking about. I don't think we're really, we're not taking on any kind of legal liability. And that's primarily because they're not a certifying or licensing organization. And so, you know, if and when somebody who is a member of ACP as a pastoral counselor gets in trouble, they're really going to be getting in trouble not with ACP. They're going to be getting in trouble with their state licensure boards. They're going to be getting in trouble with their, the, the governing bodies that are, are over them. So I don't think that we're going to be taking on a lot of legal liability for them. Their membership with us is primarily going to be as a means to education, as a means to what I would think of as continuing education, not the primary education for their licensure.
And support and identity.
Yeah.
All right. Kathy Hasty would like to know, are there alternatives to the consolidation in terms of keeping the association's monies separate?
I mean, the monies will be separate anyway. They'll have their own line items. I mean, they'll be, go ahead Linda.
I don't, I, well, I've said, so from my perspective, no. I think your question is, are there other alternatives? So, I mean, when I hear you say that, what I'm anticipating, you're thinking is sort of two parallel organizations under the same umbrella. And that is not what we're offering them. We, we looked at different models, but that's, that, we don't think that will work. And that's just not what we're interested in. So if that is what they want to do, then they're going to have to figure out another way to keep themselves solvent and, and together because that's not what we're offering them. We are, you know, their money, it will become our money. That doesn't mean that, they for example, have some grant funding that is specific to projects that they have ongoing and they will continue to have that grant funding for that, just like we have grant funding for specific projects. But they will pay their dues to ACP that will be a part of an ACP budget. We will be budgeting for the needs of their members, just like we budget for the needs of ours. of ours. Um, and I, and I hate to kind of say even they and them, because it's going to be us in the end.
Um, Yvonne Valeris asks, would the executive office of ACP be shared owing to the consolidation?
Say that again, I don't think I understand.
Would the executive office of ACP be shared owing to the consolidation? I think she may be asking about this office here.
Yeah, the staff in the national office will remain the same. If anything, we will add a member that is exclusively focused on handling their business, handling counselors' business, but not shared, no. I mean, our executive director will be the executive director, the team will stay intact the way it is. Um, they will add somebody to do the, no.
I mean, clearly, this consolidation adds a group of people who need to be managed, and we're all, our staff is already maxed out.
Yeah.
So in order to do this, we have to have another body in the office.
True.
But I think what's important to remember is when we do that, they will be a, they will be a part of our national office executive team.
Right.
They're not going to be a, an AAPC team and an ACP team.
Right.
They're all going to be one, because their members are going to be ACP members and AAPC is going away. So our executive director is going to be the executive director for ACP and anybody who's a member of ACP.
All right. Janet Lutzwood asks, have you thought about people who are not licensed but call themselves spiritual counselors? Could they be a part of this, or would only licensed folks be eligible?
It's only licensed.
Well, at this point, we're not talking about anybody but AAPC, and I think they are all licensed. So that would have to be back to the question around, or back to what, what are the requirements for an ACP member? And, um.
Yeah.
I, I actually, I actually think that we're not far enough down the road to even think about that question. I mean, who we're going to invite to be members of ACP in the future, um, I don't know. I don't know whether we're going to invite people who have different. Tracks, or, at this point, we're not. I mean, at this point, this is simply an AAPC consolidation with ACP, and we have not gone down the path of looking at who else with a variety of different kinds of education and training we might want to invite to be ACP members.
Right.
To me, that sounds, that, that to me is an entirely different conversation.
It is.
And it's going to require, um, other people thinking outside the box and down the road, and, but, but we as an executive team haven't had those kinds of conversations.
That would call for a real study group to be put together or something, that there would have to be some intra.
Yeah.
Consultation and talking about that.
Yeah.
All right. Um, Wayne Banking would like to know, would the former AAPC members who join ACP be subject to our ethics and standards and accountability? And if so, how would this be administered?
Great question. We have talked about, go ahead.
So, so we have, we have common standards and an agreed upon group of common standards for all of the spiritual cognate organizations. Those are not going away. I think everybody who is part of AAPC will be, you know, will uphold those and ACP, just like ACP folks do. The ethics piece, um, I'm sure that there will be, I'm absolutely positive, there will be some sort of ethical standards that they hold to. I don't know if it will remain exactly what we have. I, I think our ethics standards are part of the common standards. Am I, am I right about that?
I think so.
Pretty close. I think they're, they're either exactly the same or very, very similar. So from my standpoint, I don't think we, I think they would be beholden to uphold those ethical standards. I, I think the question will be, just as we live into this more, will we want to tweak those standards, the language a little bit, just to make sure that it covers the kinds of ethical concerns that counselors have? But, but they're pretty broad anyway, so I'm, I don't anticipate a lot of change in that, but to your question, Wayne, yeah, I do believe that they will be upholding standards and especially ethical standards, just like we do.
So we're coming up on the final few minutes of the town hall. Um, first, I'd just like to thank everyone for participating. We, we still have quite a few questions we weren't able to get to today, or they were asked multiple times, so I didn't repeat them if they had been, uh, answered earlier in the, in the meeting. So if you feel your question was not answered, uh, you are, please feel free to email us at webmaster@acpe.edu. We'll also be posting these recordings to, um, our YouTube channel, and I will try to follow up with anybody, um, who still has a question here. But I thought it'd be nice to, as we're ending, a question, one of the questions we had was a clarification between the referendum the ACP members will be voting on versus the board vote. And so if we could just remind folks that ACP members will be voting, and could you just maybe talk a little bit about the difference between those votes?
Anybody want to grab it?
Go for it, Amy.
We don't, the board does not act independently of the membership. We don't do anything without you guys. So we cannot vote to, um, to, what's our word we're using?
Consolidate.
Consolidate. We cannot vote to consolidate, we would not vote to consolidate without a clear directive from the membership. So, um, once we know what the will of the membership is, then that's, that's the direction we will go.
John, do you have?
Well, I would say, slight legal clarification.
Yeah.
The board technically does have that power, but didn't want to make such a big decision without hearing from the membership first.
Correct.
Which is why we've been holding the town halls and trying to answer your questions online, and, but also wanting you to vote so we can hear what, what you want to do.
Yeah, what I meant was we would be crazy to do it without making sure the membership was behind it.
Yeah.
So the, the referendum questions are very clear. I can't find them in my stack of paper there, but AAPC is going to vote whether or not they're going to dissolve, and the ACP is going to vote whether or not they direct the ACP board to invite former members of the organization or members of the former organization, AAPC, to join ACP.
Yep.
Is that right, John?
That's right. You got it.
And we also have one more town hall. So people who didn't get their questions answered today, if they want to join that town hall, I believe it's on the 28th.
That's right.
Right.
But, um, I, so.
It's in the morning. It's in the morning of, or noon Eastern time.
Ah.
Um.
On Monday? I think it's Monday, right?
Yeah, Monday, the 28th, noon Eastern.
Got it.
Yeah, we try to pick different days of the week and different times of the day to give the most opportunity for folks to join us. But, um, so again, thank you for taking the time, everyone. If you have any feedback, please email me at webmaster@acpe.edu, and we will talk to you again soon.
Thanks, John, for moderating.
Thank you.
And thank, thanks, everybody, for, um, really good questions.
Yeah, thank you. Given a hard thought.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye.